Call the order town of Prescott Valley Council Meeting, January 23rd, 2020. Welcome everyone. If I would at this time bring down Father Volmer for our invocation. If you would, please stand.
Good and gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for the blessings you shower upon us. And thanks for all those who serve as first responders in our town. Keep safe those who keep us safe. Rest your blessings upon all of our school teachers. Grant the abundance of patience and kindness towards the students. They're all excellent teachings that our students may learn well. Let's bless upon all of the parents in our town. Grant an abundance of love and patience towards their children. With excellent parenting so their children may become responsible adults who are concerned for the welfare of others. We ask your blessings upon our children, those who are the most precious in our town. Keep them safe, Lord. We ask your blessing upon our town council. Hope they make decisions that will benefit us not only today, but in the future. Rest us to Christ our Lord. Amen.
If you would, please stay standing and Ms. Peyton Bradshaw, you would lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Kirk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rick Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Lori Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Don Packard is absent. Councilmember Kendall Schumacher.
Present.
Mayor Kelpal Guda.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lurley Nye.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We're just, uh, sometimes we do this. We kind of change things up a little bit in the order. Uh, we're gonna start off with student of the month for January, please. And Councilman Grossman, if you'll just explain why.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Council, uh, members of the audience. This is always a fun time for me. Uh, and the reason we're doing this early is after you hear her bio, you'll understand. Uh, Peyton has to go to a practice and like I said, when she reads her bio to you, she will understand the level of commitment of this student. Okay. The Optimist Club of Yabri County in collaboration with Bradshaw Mountain High School and the town of Prescott Valley are honoring the outstanding student for January, Peyton Bradshaw. We believe that students like Peyton exemplify the values of optimism while the town of Prescott Valley is honored to recognize youth like Peyton that engage in school and community involvement. This honor is being presented because of the nomination and recommendation of her school staff and instructors at Bradshaw Mountain High School. I'll say that again. She's recommended by the school staff and instructors at the high school. This is not a popularity contest. This is something that is earned. And every month that we go through this, I'm always so impressed by the quality of students, their community involvement, the community in their high school, and just their commit- commitment to education, sports, whatever else that they are engaged in. So at this time, I'd like to call Peyton to the microphone and she will read her bio to you. And after that, we will have, uh, her principal court minor say a few words, and then we will have someone from the Butch Miller from the Optimist, uh, present that, and then we'll do some other introductions. Here's Peyton.
Hello. Um, first, I'd like to thank the Optimist Club and the town of Prescott Valley for this award. Um, and here we go. To start this, I love my school. I've been going to boys' basketball tournaments and football games since I was a baby. I show strong school spirit at football and basketball games because I believe being a great student isn't all academics. I also know how school spirit and large crowds can affect a player's game. I've been on varsity volleyball and basketball since my sophomore year. This year, I was voted captain for both teams. I consider that an award because my team trusts me to lead them to success and to be their biggest fan. I believe team chemistry trumps skill when it comes to wins and losses. To have a winning team, you must show trust, leadership, sportsmanship, and encouragement, which is why I believe I was voted team captain. In my years of athletics, I've gotten five certificates for my varsity sports, four student-athlete medals, an athletic academic event excellence certificate, three honorable mention awards, three coaches' awards, and lastly, two KYCA AMFM all area volleyball team nominations. Basketball is still in season, but my volleyball team finished in the Elite Eight at the state tournament. The farthest Bradshaw volleyball has gone in a very long time. From ages ten to fifteen, I played club softball. I was a pitcher, so that made me a natural leader. I won many awards on that team, including a Player of the Game Award from the opposing team at a tournament in California. Um, to flip the switch, I have achieved many academic goals as well. I earned four principals list certificates and three high honor roll certificates. I've spent a lot of time doing homework on travel buses, and I'd like to give some credit to my teammates for helping me study on long trips. I was chosen to go to a leadership conference in Phoenix last April. I learned different tactics to be a good leader in and out of the classroom. Some community service hours I've, I have come from an organization called Horses with Heart, when you groom horses and equip them so people with special needs can ride them. I've coached in five softball camps, four volleyball camps, and three basketball camps, all for little kids. Um, I'm currently assisting my varsity coach, Carrie Platt, in fourteen U Club volleyball. Um, I attend Saint Germain's Catholic Church most Saturday nights, and as a kid, I would participate in their annual Christmas play. For my future, I'm planning on attending NAU and possibly studying sports medicine. I'd like to thank my sports med teacher, Mr. Blake, for getting me very interested in this career path. I'd like to thank my parents, my sister, my grandparents for supporting me in all my sports and success. I'd like to thank Bradshaw Mountain for giving me the best high school experience and helping me meet some of the greatest people. Lastly, I'd like to thank my teachers and administration for nominating and voting me for this award. They've helped me get this far in school, and that is something unforgettable. And this is my family. That's my dad, Rick Bradshaw. My mom, Terry Bradshaw. My sister, Bridget Bradshaw. My grandma, Frida, and my pop.
And we'll get to you guys later again. Uh, I think she'd have a minor in, uh, marketing because she did a great job. Uh, here's her principal court minor to fill in the blanks from a teacher perspective.
Thank you, Marty. My name is Court Minor. I'm the proud principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School. And, um, as Marty kind of already alluded to, this is nominated by the staff. Uh, Mr. Bradshaw is a dean. He is assistant principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School. He had no poll, no play in this. And hopefully after you heard Peyton's bio, um, you can see why my staff has nominated her. Um, in the nomination, what a lot of the staff members said is how incredibly well-rounded she is. Um, she's taken pre-AP courses on her campus, dual enrollment courses on her campus, played basketball, played volleyball, played softball. She has a 4.049 GPA, top thirteen percent of her class. And, and, and so impressed with my staff once again for not just noticing, as, as Marty always says, the popular or the smartest and this and that, but, um, uh, recognizing a student who makes everyone around her better, both on the court, on the field, and in the classroom. And so, uh, it was my honor today for you guys to meet Peyton Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. At this time, I'd like to bring up Butch Miller, who's the president of the Optimist Club, to, uh, present an award to Peyton. Come on up, Peyton, also.
Peyton, just listening to your bio is unbelievable. I'm a retired forty-year, uh, teacher, counselor, principal, and superintendent in an international school and had some great kids, but you would love to have had you in my, in my class a lot of times. Uh, one of the mottos of the Optimist Club is bringing out the best in youth, our community, and ourselves. Just listening to what you had to say tonight, what you've accomplished, this recognition is definitely recognizing one of the best youth in the community. Thank you so much for your dedication and for your hard work. Good luck as a sports med person, and good luck in the rest of the year in your spo- in your sports and in your school. Congratulations.
One more time for Peyton Bradshaw. All right. At this time, we're gonna bounce back up to our proclamations. Prescott Valley Lions Club, if you guys could not figure that out yet, but they're gonna be coming on down, so come on down.
Yeah. You know what? I forgot. Yeah. Well, you got an extra one? Yeah, you got an extra one? I forgot. Prescott Valley Lions Club thirty-fifth anniversary. Whereas Lions Club International was founded in nineteen seventeen and is the largest service club organization in the world with more than 1.35 million members in more than forty-six thousand clubs in two hundred countries worldwide. And whereas the Prescott Valley Early Birds Lions, Lions Club was chartered on December thirty-first, nineteen eighty-four, and currently has forty-five members actively volunteering and supporting its many programs. And whereas the Prescott Valley Lion, Early Bird Lions Club serves the community through sight and hearing programs, they also feed the hungry, aid seniors, and the disabled, and care for the environment, and are part of a global service network of volunteers that make a difference in their community. And whereas the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club is proud to coordinate the annual Prescott Valley Days Parade. And whereas the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club contributes to the Prescott Valley community and its citizens by living its motto of "We Serve." Now therefore, in recognition of the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club, I, Kelpal Guda, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the twenty-third day of January, twenty twenty, as Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club Day, and encourage our citizens to join in recognizing the many outstanding volunteers.
We've got Lions applications, anybody who's interested. We'd love to have you. Uh, it's a privilege to be president of the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club. I, all these wonderful people, and the ones that are, that come to our meetings every Wednesday morning. Sally Bee's, seven o'clock. We'd love to have every one of you. And thank you so much for this proclamation. Oh, Saturday? Yes, on Saturday, um, the twenty-fifth of January, we are collecting, uh, used eyeglasses, hearing aids, um, whatever implements that you have for, to give to those that can't afford them, um, different countries. Uh, we've got, we collect hundreds and hundreds of eyeglasses. It will be, we'll, so we'll be at Sally Bee's from ten o'clock until two. Uh, if you have any, come on, bring them on down. We'd love to, love to share them with others that need them.
Rick Anderson's representing as well, so. All right, everyone. Thank you very much for what you guys do. And also, if you're not familiar, they also are responsible for doing the Christmas trees, selling them around Christmas time at the corner of Florentine and Glassford. So, and all that money goes to, as you already heard, a great cause. So, again, one more time for the Lions Club.
One, two, three.
Roar!
And we now are gonna invite Brady down, the one and only, from the chamber.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, my name is Brady Cabral. I am here representing the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we are, I like to think the business heart of Prescott Valley. Um, and I am here today to celebrate the entrepreneurial spirit that drives, uh, the growth in the business community of Prescott Valley forward. Um, there's no better way to recognize, uh, that spirit other than a brand-new business owner in Prescott Valley or a new member to the chamber here in Prescott Valley. So today, I would like to introduce Jeff Branlin, the owner of Assurance Electrical Services. Jeff?
So I'd like to just give a quick introduction and, uh, and tell you who we are and what we're all about. Uh, my name is Jeff Branlin. I'm a local electrical contractor. We've been in business since two thousand twelve. We've only been in business here locally since two thousand eighteen. Um, we provide residential, industrial, and commercial electrical service. We provide free estimates. Um, we pride ourselves in our customer support and quality of work. So if anyone is interested in getting electrical work done, feel free to give us a shout. Um, what else about us?
How did they get ahold of you?
Oh, how'd they get ahold of it? Okay, so, so we're listed everywhere, um, not only on our, our vehicles, but, uh, I have business cards myself. We have a website, assuranceelectricalaz.com. And, uh, that's, that's how you get ahold of us. Um, we're, we're trying to expand and become more of a part of the community. That's why we're joining the, uh, Chamber of Commerce here as well as, uh, Prescott. And, uh, I think that's about what I got. All right. Thank you much.
We're very excited to have you, Jeff. Um, you can find his contact information on the Prescott Valley Chambers website as well. Um, and just, uh, one more time, round of applause for Jeff, a new business owner of Prescott Valley.
We're also gonna be offering a ten percent discount for any Chamber member, so.
All right, moving on. We are gonna go to certificates. First one up will be Chad Uber, Prescott Valley Police Department. Come on down, Chad, and chief.
Welcome tonight. I wanted to, uh, just congratulate Chad, and there's two others that we're gonna, um, congratulate tonight for their service awards to Prescott Valley Police Department and the Prescott Valley community itself. So let me tell you a little bit about Chad. Uh, Chad was hired with the town of Prescott Valley in January of twenty fifteen. He, uh, completed the academy and graduated from NARTA class thirty-eight in May of twenty fifteen. He's been a police officer, uh, with the police departments ever since. Uh, Chad is a valued member of the Prescott Value, uh, Prescott Valley SWAT team for the last two and a half years. He's a field training officer, uh, where he's responsible for making sure that new officers are prepared to take the roads on solo status. Uh, he's also a certified bicycle patrol officer. Uh, during his time with the Prescott Valley Police Department, Chad has been awarded the Police Star, a life-saving award, and Expert Marksmanship Award. Chad is married to his wife, Jamie, over the last eight and a half years. Jamie, are you here? Come on up. Uh, and her, and their two children, Kason, seven, and Cameron, six years old. So I'd like to congratulate Chad for his last five years with the Prescott Valley Police Department.
Family come up. Heck, yeah. And mom and dad, too.
All right, Clinton Mathis, if you would like to approach, please. Another five-year veteran of the Prescott Valley Police Department. Uh, Chad and Clinton have something in common. They, they both went to the, uh, NARTA class thirty-eight together. They were rookies together. Uh, Clinton came to the Prescott Valley Police Department in December of twenty fourteen. He completed the academy and graduated from NARTA class thirty-eight in May of twenty fifteen. He has been a patrol officer and a detective with the, or with the, uh, the Prescott Valley Police Department since. Uh, Clinton became a certified bike officer as well. He's a general instructor, and eventually a field training officer. He holds certifications in verbal de- escalation, mental health, first aid, crisis intervention, and is an instructor of many courses held at the department. Uh, Clinton maintains his emergency medical technician certificate, and he is responsible for training and administering our department's NARCAN program, as well as training officer's basic first aid. Uh, furthermore, he is, uh, participant in the NARTA, uh, instructors courses, and he teaches recruits about domestic violence. In June of twenty nineteen, Clinton became a detective with the Special Victims Unit. As a member of the Special Victims Unit, he is assigned to investigate crimes of domestic violence, child abuse, and sexual offenses. Clinton is responsible for maintaining verification and compliance of sex offenders residing in Prescott Valley. Clinton has been trained in advanced interview and interrogation techniques, advanced forensic interview techniques, child abuse and homicide investigations, forensic statement analysts, and is a member of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Furthermore, Clinton also participates in numerous community events, including Hope Fest, Take Back the Night, and most recently Shop with the Cop. Clinton considers his greatest accomplishment to be his five-year marriage with his wife, Rachel, and raising his new daughter, Emily. Rachel and Emily, if you guys would like to come up here as well. So I'd like to congratulate Clinton on five years of law enforcement experience with the Prescott Valley Police Department. Congratulations, Clinton. And finally, tonight, uh, for our recognition with the police department, I would like to, uh, bring up Detective Sergeant Jason Kaufman. Tonight's recognition with Jason is a 20-year service to the Prescott Valley Police Department. Jason, Jason originates from Long Island, New York, and is a third-generation police officer. Jason is a graduate of Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, where he received his Bachelor's of Science degree in Aerospace Studies. Jason has been a law enforcement officer for the past 22 years, where he began his career in the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office as a detention officer, eventually transitioning to a police officer at the Prescott Valley Police Department. For the last 20 years, he has held various assignments to include patrol officer, narcotics detective, assigned to the Partners Against Narcotics Trafficking Task Corps, a patrol corporal, a patrol sergeant, Support Services Division Sergeant, and the detective sergeant over the Spec, Special Victims Unit. Jason has also held positions as a SWAT officer, Special Weapons and Tactics, Police Department Range Master and Armorer, Use of Force Instructor, Taser Instructor, Firearms Instructor, Public Information Officer, Community Service Coordinator, Internal Affairs Investigator, as well as a Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy Instructor. Sergeant, in Sergeant Kaufman's current assignment as a detective sergeant over the Special Victims Unit, he maintains and supervises detectives and civilians in domestic violence and sexual assault investigations. Jason oversees two grants, which include the SART grant, Sexual Assault Response Team, and the VOCA grant, Victims of Crime Acts. His team is responsible for investigating crimes against children and performing sex offender audits. Jason is a qualified expert in the Yavapai County Superior Court and Prescott Justice of the Peace Jurisdiction in the areas of use of force, drug and alcohol recognition, as well as investigation of illegal drugs. Sergeant Kaufman is also happily married to his wife Anna Marie, has two children, that's Brooklyn and John Franco, who also reside here in Prescott Valley. So I want to congratulate Jason for 22 years of service in law enforcement, and 20, 20 years with the Prescott Valley Police Department. And if, if you don't mind, if the children and Anna come up, please.
And we'll do a little something for the 20-year council one.
Yes, I just want to say that even though I'm new, I appreciate your attitude and your energy and your belief in, in doing what's right and good. I mean, that's awesome. I really appreciate you.
I've known Jason for quite a while. I won't go into a whole lot of details, but we all know how quiet and shy and reserved he is. Jason is just one of those people and police officers that, if I was starting off as a police officer, he would be my mentor, my example. That's what I, his, what he's done is what I would want to live up to and, and achieve in my career. So, thank you for 20 years, another Long Island boy. Yes, I'm from that area, too. So, anyway, thank you for 20 years and continued success. Thank you.
Jason, thank you for your, your 20 years. It's been an honor knowing you for that 20 years. You were the first police officer I've met in Prescott Valley, right in this room, after I came on the council. So, that was a frightening night, because you, you were still on pant at the time, or coming off. But I got over it, and I'm better for it, and I appreciate having known you, and you're doing a great job for us. Thank you.
And I want to say the same, too, that you're easy to get to know, so I really appreciate that, too. And now I know not to mess with you after hearing your records of everything you've done. I, I truly love the Coffee with a Cop program, because I think that's where so many people get a chance to talk to the officers as people, so that you have our respect as citizens, but also to get to know you as a person is amazing. So, congratulations on your award tonight, and we hope we get to keep you around for a long time.
Guess what? Jason and I were rookies together. I was a rookie councilwoman, and we went out into the neighborhoods together during block watch, and I don't know who was more nervous, you or me, Jason. But look, we persevered, and you stand proud, and we're proud of you, and we thank your family. We thank you for all the support we realized that you provided him. It's really hard to realize that it was 20 years ago when you and I were roaming the neighborhoods, but it's fond memories, and there's things about Jason that we can't even tell you about, because they didn't happen here. We'll keep everybody guessing. You know what I'm talking about, no? Oh, good. We have a secret. We have a wonderful secret. You've been a blessing to the community, to the department, and you've supported me in ways I don't think you even understand. Humbly. Thank you.
Jason, I've had the privilege to know you for pretty much the entire 20 years, and I can honestly say in front of everyone here that there is not a single person or another officer that has a bigger heart or more energy than you. You go out every single day, and you make a difference, and that is huge. And I know your dad is looking down on you tonight with a big smile on his face, sir. So congratulations.
This couldn't be possible without my wife, my kids, everybody in the room, all the police officers, Dennis Gregory, and all the citizens of this community. I love what I do, or I wouldn't do it. I love being a cop, it's the only thing I ever wanted to be. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Thank you, council, for your kind words. Town manager, thank you, sir, for your support. And it's been an honor to serve. Andrew, my friend, thank you for coming. James Gregory, do the best. James Edelstein, Chief Freitag, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Alright.
Good stuff, good stuff.
Thank you, folks.
Item eight, council comments. We'll start on the end with Councilwoman Hunt.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Councilman?
I got nothing tonight, sorry.
Wow.
Moving on.
I don't have anything. We're good? Alright, moving on. Item nine, consent agenda. All items, all matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from this consent and agenda and will be considered separately for discussion. Council, we've all had a chance to review. If there's anything we wish to pull, we'll pull it now. If not, we'll need a motion.
I'd like to make an emotion, I'd like to make a motion by electronic vote to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote. Thanks, ma'am. Moving on, item 10, zoning map change, CMC 19-012, Conchina Mini Storage. Mr. Parker, I believe that's you?
I have a question.
Okay. When, I'm sure councilor members, Mr. Parker, in front of us a couple of weeks ago, discussing this. If there's any other questions, let's ask them. If not, we'll be looking for a motion.
I can do the second reading, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. An ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 19-012, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately two-acre parcel located on the east side of the State Route 69, approximately 500 north of the Conchina Place from R1L-70, Residential Single Family Limited to C3, Commercial Minor Industrial Zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Alright, at this time, we're looking for a motion.
Shall the ordinance pass, Mayor?
Shall this pass?
Yes.
Thought I just asked you that.
And that passes, Mayor.
Moving on to 10B, Second Amendment Final Development Plan, FDP 19-006 and FDP 19-009, Antelope Park Parcel A and B.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. This is a change to the name on the final plat slash Final Development Plan. You recall, on the 19th of December, you first amended the Final Development Plan to change the name to, I believe it was Mandalay. Now you're changing the name to be able to add the original LLC. Purpose of this is because of the water allocation through the state of Arizona, and it's important that the name that the certificate was issued in remains in order to be able to convey this subdivision. Your action this evening will only change or add names to the plat. It will not alter or change the number of units or any configuration of any of the lots contained therein. I would respond to questions you may have.
And for the most part, this is just a cleaning up some verbiage.
And I hope we don't do this again.
I hope we don't do it again.
Mr. Maguire, do you have anything? I see you in the back. Thank you, sir. There's no other questions for Mr. Maguire or Mr. Parker? Can we have a motion?
Make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number 2119, adopting and approving Second Amendment Final Development Plan, FDP 19. For some reason, I have blurred vision, let me put my glasses on. OO6 and FDP 19009 for Antelope Park Parcels by electronic vote.
I'd like to second.
Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Moving on, item 11, new business, 11A Professional Service Agreement, Fairgrounds Two Well Equipping. I believe Mr. Wadsworth is sick tonight.
Sick or my dog, I heard.
Sir, thank you for joining us.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me present these agenda items. I'll be brief, as you're already familiar with this project. The Fairgrounds Two Well, you already approved one contract related to the well pump testing that Neil Wadsworth presented to you fairly recently. That testing was successful. It looks like it's going to be a good well site, 300 to 400 GPM capacity on that well. So we're going to move forward with equipping. This contract is for Civil Tech. The total contract amount is $95,753, and that includes all the plans and specifications, all the bidding services, all the construction admin services as, after we go to bid, and closing out the project through our submittals through ADQ and preparing as-built drawings for the town. Here's a picture of the well location, just north of Fane Road on the east side of town. And there's the actual wellhead. So if anyone has any questions?
I don't have any questions, council?
Straight up.
Alright, with that being said?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the Professional Services Agreement with Civil Tech Engineering in the amount of $95,753 for the Fairgrounds Two Well Site and Pipeline Design, CIP Number W471, by electronic vote.
I'd like to second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Alright, should I keep going?
Keep, move on.
Go ahead. The next item I'm presenting is the change order for Antelope Park Well Equipping. This is change order number one, and it'll also be the final closeout change order for the project. The original contract was for 483,000.
Hang on one second. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm lost from up here.
This is 11E.
Did I skip someone?
You skipped ahead, but that's okay.
No, no, you're fine. While we're here, just, just.
I can sit down and go back.
No, no, absolutely not.
Go for it.
Go for it, let's go.
The change order will add $22,621. A few items came out during construction, some minor issues with our, our gauges and electrical components and our chlorine equipment, as well as the access gate. But the majority of this change order actually comes from some erosion issues we were experiencing on the east side of the property. We have a slope, a significant slope on that side, that after the first major rain event, we started to see some erosion, and we just decided to go ahead and, and armor that whole east bank with about 40 tons of riprap. So that was, that's the majority of this change order, is the drainage and erosion concerns on the site. So there's a picture of the well looking towards the west, the front of it, looking north, and there's the armoring along the east bank that we completed. Any questions?
No, sir. Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
My question's a general question. I understand the process, but I just want to make sure that we're crossing all our Ts and all our Is united and ready to go forward.
Yeah.
That's what we need to know.
Yes. The well is currently in service, and it's a 400-plus GPM well for the town. So it's added a lot of capacity.
Thank you.
So the reason why we didn't do the riprap to begin with is?
Well, sometimes, if you, if you can construct a project in the sweet spot of the year where the new vegetation is blooming out, you can sometimes get some of the grass to stabilize your slopes. But if you're building right during the rainy season, sometimes you just, there's not enough time for the seeds to germinate, and rather than take a risk and lose more of our site over the, the course of the rainy season, we just decided to go ahead and armor the site, and we thought it was the best choice for the overall project.
Good answer, thank you.
Wouldn't it be safe to say that you watch your nickels and dimes, and if you don't have to put in riprap, you'll avoid it?
Absolutely.
Alright, with that being said, can we get a motion?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract with Showfield Civil Construction LLC, named out of $22,621 for the Antelope Well Equipping Project, CIP Number W442.B, by electronic vote.
I'd like to second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you. I guess we'll just jump around a little bit more, and just go back to 11B, I suppose.
Randy, if you take your jacket back to the rental shop, they might not charge you for a full day.
Oh, my goodness. That was not nice.
Mayor and council, I'm, it's a pleasure to be with you again today. I'll be brief as well. This is an, we've talked about a couple of times already. We are applying for community development block grant funds. Because of that, we're required to go through a public participation process, and we're required to have two public hearings. This is the second of those public hearings. For a project to be considered eligible, it has to have been discussed during the first public hearing. So at this point, we're coming to you with the resolutions to proceed with those applications. One of those is a competitive application, and one of the...
One of those is a competitive application, and one of those is a... Pretty much, if we dot our Is and cross our Ts, we'll get the funds. Now, there's four resolutions attached to this action. Resolution 2120 is the regional account fund resolution that will allow us to apply for funds to slightly remodel the Boys and Girls Club, complete courtyard improvements, redo the parking lot, possibly add some outdoor basketball courts as well. Resolution 2121 will allow us to apply for state special projects funds. These are the competitive funds that we go after. We proposed using those in the vicinity of Coyote Springs Elementary School for some street and sidewalk improvements there. Resolution 2122 is a relocation assistance plan that we're required to adopt. We do not anticipate relocating or displacing anybody. This is a formality that we have to adopt. And the final resolution is 2123. This is a matching funds resolution. If we're successful in applying for up to $500,000 in state special project funds, if we match that with 20%, which would be $100,000, then we'll receive additional points towards our competitive application. So, that's what that is. With that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions you have?
I just want to make sure we open it up for the public hearing at this time. So, if there's any other comments other than Orion from out in the public? So, we're going to close it up on 11B for the public hearing. And then Ryan already did 11C. We don't have any other questions for Ryan. I think, I mean, we've all been up here enough to talk about how great of a project it is or can possibly be. So, with that being said, make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 11C, Community Development Block Grant Funding Applications, including... And authorize the mayor to sign resolution number 2120 to authorize the application for CDBGRA project funding, and resolution number 2121 to authorize the application for CDBGSSP project funding, and resolution 2122, the anti-displacement resolution assistant plan is required by CDBG, and resolution number 2123 to authorize matching town funds of up to $100,000, which will be in the 2021 budget for the Coyote Springs Elementary School Area Sidewalk Street Improvement Project, all by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, with a motion and a second, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Thanks, Ryan. All right, moving on, 11D, agreement for professional services with Jacobs Engineering Group for engineering consulting services. Mr. Mundelo? Randy, are you not coming up for this one? No.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We had this in front of you for work study on January 2nd. The purpose of this is to address a couple issues scientifically, engineering-based. One is to work on the wastewater treatment plant process flows and evaluation. There's some differences in some of our metering there. It's a complex process, as we showed you through a previous diagram. Dealing with some of our water system losses, these are losses that we don't get to bill for. So, it's a hit both in terms of our water portfolio and our income. And return to sewer ratio determination, which is... Kind of puts a dent in our overall water portfolio. We had selected Jacobs Engineering at our last meeting to talk to. They're familiar with our systems. They have a water model for us. They're familiar with our data. We're coming back to you with the contract for $119,410, completed by the end of the year, and the funds for this are budgeted.
All right, with that being said, any questions for Mr. Mundelo?
If not, I'd be glad to make a motion. Motion to authorize... I'm sorry, motion to approve the Professional Services Agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., in the amount of $119,410 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Hunt? That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item 12, comments from the public. Anyone that wishes to come on down and speak their mind for five minutes or less? And with that being said, number 13, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to a chair.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Good night. And if you want to stick around for the CFD, we'll give us a couple of minutes to get caught back up.